I'm gonna go ahead and call the August 14th, 2023 Cambridge City Town Council meeting to order. We're gonna open with prayer.
Well, Father God, we are so grateful to be able to gather together. And Lord, we look to you tonight for your blessings. May your wisdom guide the meeting tonight and our discussions. Lord, we pray blessings upon all the people, the servants, public servants, and others who give of their time and their talents to bless our community. And Lord, we just continue to thank you for this community that you've given us and the love that we have for it. And Lord, we just thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Wledge of allegiance.
Wledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, can you go ahead and call the rules?
Steve Sore.
Here.
Mike Ginnick.
Here.
Debbie McGinley here.
Jim McClain.
Here.
Jeff Morris.
Here.
All right. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from our last meeting?
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
And the claims?
I'll make a motion to accept the claims.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the financials?
I'll make that motion too.
I'll second that motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. There were two weeks of claims. I'm sorry. So we have the budget claims as well, so.
Right. Yep. Has everybody looked at those?
So two, sign the contract and then sign the rest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we need a motion for those also, is where?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the claims, budget claims.
Minutes.
Minutes, I mean.
Okay.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
You going down? It looks like we have no public hearing tonight, so we're gonna get right into our guest, Robert Miller.
He didn't let me know, but he had a death on his name, so I'm glad he'll come in a matter of time.
Okay. And Eric Tripplick from the American Legion.
And he's got a date, secret switching.
Okay.
Sorry, Dave, I didn't know you were coming.
Yep.
But yeah, sorry about that.
Put your name down.
I didn't know until yesterday this morning.
Oh, great.
So we have a check for $7,000 for Capit Hill.
Awesome. Yay. Great. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. And just like home, I'll hand it to you.
Do you have a heritage still, or do we need to take it?
Um, it's, uh, yeah, I could rece... Well, Bob, it's written out to Western Wayne Heritage, so I could receive this.
Well, it's really being donated to the town.
To the town.
Motion to accept the donation on behalf of the town is how it should be if there's any way to do it.
We can change that.
And I can bring you another one tomorrow.
To the town.
Okay, and then I could write your receipt.
Yeah, I'll swap out tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
So when I get a motion? The town of Cambridge City Cemetery Fund or something like that, they'll make sure it gets in there.
Thank you very much.
Thanks guys. That's wonderful.
I don't have a second on that motion except that I did.
Jesse.
All in favor?
Aye. Thanks again.
Again, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. So do you want me just... You want it back now, or you just want it?
Yeah.
Awesome.
I'll write it up tomorrow.
Okay, thank you so much. Great, thank you. I saw Mr. Miller come in.
Okay, so we'll back up and Mr. Miller?
Yes.
I guess we're here... You're interested in a property the town owns?
There's, uh, yeah, there's two parcels, I believe, that... Uh, there's one between my house and a neighboring house that was plotted originally as a road that never got developed. And I didn't know if that's something that the town ever accepts bids on to abandon the parcel so that it could be split evenly amongst the neighboring landowners. I talked to the neighboring landowner and they were interested. The, uh, and then there's also another parcel west of what was the old Meg warehouse, is now Regal Manufacturing Warehouse. And it is, um, Meg did not... I don't think they did the survey when they put up the fence. And the fence is, I believe, coming, intruding onto the town's property a little bit. But also the trees from the town are coming in and pushing over the fence. So, um, I was looking at if that's not being developed or anything, if that's something that the town would be interested in taking bids on as well.
Do we have a map of that, or?
Well, he wasn't sure what.
I didn't know exactly. I didn't know what the process was. This is... This doesn't happen to happen quickly. It's just something that I was trying to, uh, if we could get it started. And if you tell me what I need to bring next time, let me do that.
Didn't you tell me that you were already maintaining that area by your house?
Yes.
And then the one over by Meg, or?
We, we have cleaned up the one over by Meg, um, trying to get some of the trees back. Um, so that the... Cause, uh, some of that, the ditch line that was there has kind of been corroded away. And I'm trying to get that back so that the water clears our property a little better. It's just, and it's hard to get to. Um, I know, I'm not blaming the town or anything for this. Cause I didn't know, honestly, I didn't know, and I don't think Meg did, cause they put the sum of the fence a little bit onto the town's property. So I don't think they knew either, but, um, I've done a survey, I had a survey done by Ashton Lane Surveyors out of Muncie. And, um, it appears their lines make sense, so.
Cause you say you had a survey done of your property, or of the property that you want to see the city abandon?
I just had it done on my property.
On your property?
Yeah.
And is this adjoining property that you're interested in?
Yes.
I think at a minimum, we just need to at least have a drawing of it of what you're, what you want. And what sometimes will, if they decide to abandon it, then they will put it up for bid, including to adjoining property owners.
Sure.
Oftentimes, that will be subject to whoever the successful bidder is paying for the survey, if that's required for meets and bounds, legal description. But at a minimum, they need to see a drawing of what it is so they can decide and do a study. Well, will we ever need this down the line? Will it ever have a public use? Or is it something that we can't abandon and offer for sale?
Sure. Okay.
Rob, you said that Meg was interested also, but just you. Did you say you got neighbors interested?
On the, the one next to my house?
Yeah.
Um, I, I didn't think it would be fair for me just to go in and take the 100%. I was looking at splitting it 50/50. Um, I, I told them I'd pay for the, the, the survey, but I, I just, I don't think it's fair. Because it's technically, we're both our properties.
Right.
Uh, if, if you would draw it. And so I was trying to split it with our neighbors to, so that we all kind of grow a little bit, but we're, and we end up taking care of it.
Did you say they're interested in it, or do you know?
Yeah, I think so.
So you would do a bid jointly with your neighbors or something?
Yeah, I would, I would probably bid it and then I would do the survey and give them their half or whatever it is.
It looks like it's a platted street. That's, that's right there.
Yeah.
Is that... Cause if that's the case, then a different procedure would be to vacate it, which then automatically, if you vacate it, goes to each side. But of course, for compensation, you would want to be offering it for sale. So we really just need a little more detail of what we're talking about.
Is there south of your property?
Uh, just, uh, west and south.
There's like a tree line.
I think it's College Street.
Is that what wasn't developed, was College all the way to?
It's still a platted street. It looks like though.
Yeah, that one, the other one is not a street. The other one, size industrial, is not a street.
It's called here.
So is all this between, I assume Walnut Boundary somewhere along College Avenue, or?
It's College Street.
It's College Street.
Yeah, so it's coming up off of Delaware.
Okay, by the school. Oh, okay.
Right now, College Street turns into Third, but really it's platted. It goes further, keeps going south.
I see. I see College Street. Is that something you could do a drawing of, just lay it out as far as we're talking about?
Yes.
If you could get that to us before council meetings, so if we have to talk about it, or you'll give them insights to make an initial decision.
Okay.
Can't wait on doing anything with those two properties, correct? Now, the, the other property he's talking about is there that lot, um, sort of lands in between Walnut Street. So far after those houses on Walnut Street, there's some land behind them and where Meg is. It's where, you know, the girl was abducted, where she was drug to, that it was that, it's that property that the town owns back behind her.
Right across the street, yeah, from my house there.
Yeah.
Yeah. The old railroad cab runs back through there.
So Bob, he needs to bring in like a map and stuff.
Yeah, you can get it up down the county.
Yeah. Yeah, and you can, you can get that from the surveyor's office. You can work on one. They can draw it up and put lines and everything on it, so.
We can do that.
Yep. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Was that it?
Well, the, the other thing that we, I was talking about, and I don't know if this is the right place, or could I go to a park board or whatever? But I had an idea for the, the park that I, uh, for playground equipment, something like that to, where I might be able to help as, as a wood company, is to develop some type of a wood. I don't know how best to describe it, is a tree fort, tree idea, instead of doing the plastic and the metal. Do something with wood that maybe we could save the, the town some money. And also maybe have some community installation because it's more consistent with just regular construction, house construction that most people have some experience in. And also maybe assist in chasing some grants to see if we can get something, uh... I brought some picture ideas, but it was just a, I, just an introduction of the idea. I didn't know if this was the right platform or if it should be at the, the town. There's a front and back. There's a... I wanted to utilize the, the trees. Um, but I didn't want to damage the trees. You'll notice, yeah, I'm sorry. The, uh, I didn't want to damage the trees, but I wanted to utilize the trees. So if you notice, they're built around the trees and they go, they're all simple structures that go straight down to the ground. And then they have different types of bridges and more of a Swiss Family Robinson, um, idea.
Where's this at, you know?
Uh, that one is actually over in Europe. Um, I believe that's over in England. But, uh, the idea, there's a lot of different companies that do this, but the, the lumber aspect, I can get. And then the, obviously it would take a structural engineer to, to design it. But yeah, I, I've been kind of researching the different types of inclusiveness for, um, different types of handicaps and different types of conditions. And, and they say to get away from the static, the, uh, the plastic slides, which is one of the things they do because of cochlear implants and the, the, um, static electricity that's created from these plastic slides and things. That there's a lot of different ways you could probably allow some... There's a lot of different designs, a lot of different engineers out there that have different ways to allow kids that are wheelchair bound and still participate and enjoy. And I thought this would be a fairly reasonable way. I mean, obviously they couldn't go to all the platforms, but they could go to quite a few and join in with friends and...
It's cool, it's my liability.
Right.
Sure.
Our next park meeting is September 20th.
Okay.
At 6 o'clock.
Okay.
Right here, so why don't you join us?
Sure.
Okay.
Playground, playground improvements are a lot of what we're discussing.
Yeah, we're talking about that a lot.
That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Adam from Westler.
Hi, Council. I've got three items in front of you this, uh, this evening. Got a change order from the contractor to the water main project, pay application from the contractor, and also Westler's agreement for the Phase 2 work. Start by looking at change order number six. This is the last change order on Phase 1A, the in-town water main project. Um, it is for a decrease in the amount of $66,000 and some change. Be more than happy to get into as much detail as you would like. It consists of four items that plus or minus the contract, but ultimately ends up netting a savings. Are there any specific questions you'd like me to dial in on, or items you want to discuss?
On the savings part?
Yeah. Yeah, it's always great to end, end with the savings.
Maybe just go over what it is, why we're saving.
Sure. Um, so like I said, there's some adds, some deducts. The adders were a slim four scenes. We need to add this thing there. We need to put that gizmo there because it wasn't shown. The savings are from, um, unit quantity adjustments. So when we first bid this project, we've got to assume that they're going to install this many feet of pipe and this many tons of asphalt. We assume high. So, um, ultimately they didn't end up needing a lot of those quantities, and that produced the, the largest amount of the savings on this change order. Um, there is an attachment in here that's got all the pluses and minuses for each of the pay items. Um, but in large, uh, we, we anticipated, we had about $50,000 in there for poor soils over excavation. And they barely had to get into that. Uh, so that was a big savings on this. Uh, this is not the last item you'll see on the water main contract. Just so you're aware, this is the last pay application. So this will pay the contractor out to 100% of their line items. But what this doesn't do is give them their retainage. There'll be one more pay application, pay application nine, uh, for their retainage. And Westler's holding on to that while they're preparing record drawings. So with that, I can hop over to pay application eight unless there's specific questions. Uh, pay application eight pays the contractor for everything minus retainage. So it's for the amount of $246,909.20. And like I said, it lets them claim every line item that they actually installed on this project. A few months back, we had our substantial completion log through and they achieved that, um, for flying colors. And they've just been working on punch list items. So a simple there, you know, a little bit of restoration there. And we're comfortable, um, looking at this with the remaining work being warranty items. You know, you can't just sit on there and make them get everything perfect, but there's a certain line and we definitely crossed that line. Um, so there's a few things. There's the, the ADA or the NDOT pavement ramp, uh, the handicap ramp that needs restored. But aside from that, um, they have achieved, completed all the work and, um, good for final payment. Any questions?
So, so the work that's been done in Delaware, I get asked this all the time. Is that finished? I mean, is there pavement that's going to be put up there, or that, that patch work is it? That's all?
Yeah, and oftentimes that's the question in a kind of a project. So we're left with train tracks left going throughout town.
Yeah.
You know, and whenever we start these jobs, we like to have that discussion. Do you want to repave the whole street?
Right.
Or do you want to leave it like with train tracks, you know, the water main plus the patches? And then come back and get that with like community crossings or something like that. Oftentimes, the cost to do all that pavement, it might have prevented us from getting started in the first place.
Right, it's expensive.
It is.
So is that all you have then?
That's all I have on pay application number eight.
So I need to have them make a motion for me to sign that?
I need a motion to have change order six approved and pay application number eight approved.
We need to kind of come back and approve that change on the streets since that is a county road. I know it's ours.
Yeah, I know. It's a little bit confusing. That's the reason I asked you about that, because some of it is a county road where that was patched.
When we were with county, our RPR coordinated with, uh, I obviously don't know who it was.
Right.
Someone from the county stopped by and talked to our inspector and let him know, hey, here in county, yes, we know that, but what we need to do.
Yeah.
It's my understanding that all the roads were restored to the county standards. I do know we had to change a couple details on our pavement section, but I can't speak to exactly what those were.
So do I have a motion to allow me to sign these?
I'll make a motion. Sign away.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion then.
All right, all in favor?
Which is technically to approve that, may I have to speak to you?
Correct.
You're always going to sign.
I'm on your side, Steve.
And then the, is there anything else, questions, discussion items on the water main project?
One thing I, I don't know if it's you or Ken or who, but I've noticed in the last week, a lot of cones on roads around the town. Is that from patching that needs done, or?
The one over there on, um, Simmons and Parkway, there's a sinkhole right by one of the patches from when they dug. And they're going to be coming in to redo work that. They were hoping to be in here Friday to take care of that, but they didn't get in here Friday.
I can think of maybe two or three areas.
Yeah, I've seen two or three.
Where's the handicap ramp at?
Up there by the little Bob's where the smoke shop, the, when you're coming to Plum Street.
Yeah.
Um, one of the valves is actually in that handicap ramp. Now, don't know what the rea... It can't be there. And so they've talked and they've got worked out a solution.
The valve can't be in the little bumpy things on the handicap ramp.
And so they're gonna, Cooley will be in to refit, reconfigure that ramp to satisfy NDOT.
They could figure that out before they did that. Guess not.
Yeah, I don't know whether, yeah, I don't know whether they knew that it wasn't supposed to be that.
I... Cooley does plenty of NDOT work. Um, I think it's just one of those things, no one's perfect Friday, everyone has a short day. But they're, they're more than willing to, to make it right. And if anything, Cooley has, um, taken the lead on coordinating with NDOT to make sure they know what they need to do to fix this.
So it's a big handle?
It is.
Okay.
Last item I have before you is the agreement for Phase 2, uh, the water system improvements. And that is the industrial part, specific to the elevated storage tank and the redundant water main. Um, this, uh, have the agreement, it's a lot of pages, just to hit the highlights. It's a new milli gallon tank. It's about 6,000 foot of water main. And it provides for the survey, design, permitting, and bid of this project. Don't necessarily think we need to step through and read through the milestone and design meetings. Uh, but one thing we want to, and things critical to focus on, is coordinating with the county and with EDC initially. So our initial efforts will be looking at land, looking at where we can put that tank, what makes it most sense. Who's going to come in, where, what are their plans? And make sure we're taking that first step appropriately. Um, that covers, covers the first several pages, verse 6, 7, and it brings us to page 8. Uh, one thing I did want to point out is that land will be required on this project. Building a water tower, we'll need to put it on some ground and get permanent acquisition there. And we will definitely need easement acquisition. The extent are unknown, but we budgeted for five. Um, it looks like we'll need less than that, so we took that and said, all right, we'll be covered there. And did want to let you know that Westler subs that work out for easement acquisition and coordination. So calling the property owners back and forth with appraisals, it's not our bread and butter, so we have a firm that we work with and that we complete those services. Uh, compensation, we're on page 10. Total lump sum fee for everything aside from that land acquisition is $199,000. And then the easement and acquisition work will be done on an hourly basis because we don't know how many and how contentious property owners will be. And that's a timing materials amount for $63,000. And then looking at the schedule, I'd, I'd like to start talking to the county, um, here, if not this month, early next month. And I think we can get our survey completed in October with the primary work really picking up heavy in January once we get the site selected and the water mains laid out. Those are the highlights I have to go over. What questions you have?
So are you going to coordinate the, the meeting with the county?
Yeah, I plan on it, yes. I plan on taking, uh, Westler plans to take lead on that, keep Cambridge City involved. Steve, you had mentioned wanting to have someone kind of...
Yeah, we're gonna have somebody sitting in.
I, I think it's critical that Cambridge has someone from the council present.
I do too.
And maybe the attorney. Maybe.
When it gets, you guys ask questions, I have a couple major questions, a couple minor questions, and a couple clarifications.
Sure.
You want me to shoot? Major questions are, this does not talk, the timing of your payments on here, other than just we'll submit progress building, maybe monthly, is, and that kind of ties into the second question, is any of this tied into us getting financing for this or not? So the timing of your payment and any conditions to your payment.
Are you looking at our standard terms and conditions, Bob?
I'm actually just looking at the whole contract. The one that talks about the, the timing of it was on...
Oh, our, our schedule?
Yeah. Well, no, on, let's see what page it is. Thought it said monthly.
Oh, you're probably looking at the bottom of page 10. Professional services will be invoiced monthly.
That's it, yeah.
Yep. Um, no, it don't, uh, it was not my plan to have that attached, any kind of financing. With this first step being getting ready to close on that project, to construct, I don't see obtaining a co-funding source being tied to this.
Okay, so how much would the town be expected to be paying on this? Not, they don't want to get into being obligated to pay a significant amount of money and then have all financing fall through and they be stuck.
Okay. Fair point. Um, so...
You think?
Mars will have the stone.
Steve will sign it.
I'll sign it.
So, you know, before we finish the design phase is ultimately when I want to have funding identified. Um, so that would look at our lump sum minus the bid phase? Is about where I would be looking at that, Bob?
So you're $199 minus the $130, so?
$199 minus 26.
Oh, okay. So other than the $26,000, they're going to be obligated to be paying $173 regardless of whether they get funding or not? And that money will come from...
If we proceed blindly on this, yes. However, with the funding situation, knowing we need to pursue co-funding and funding on this, I don't feel that we're going to move forward with this project unless we're confident with the funding sources.
Well, I, but how far into it you think you would get with building, short of you learning, oh my gosh, we can't get the funding? Is there any idea, any estimate?
I don't think I have a firm answer on that because there's several options that we're looking at pursuing. Uh, so I don't know that, you know, we get to a 50% or a March or, or whatever that threshold would, would be.
And it's with that, with the town having the ability, if that happened, to terminate this contract with you? At that point, stop it, say no more?
Absolutely. If we get into this and for whatever reason the project can't be funded, I think both parties have no interest in continuing to work on this. I don't want to work on it if you're not getting it.
Is that in here as far as the ability for early termination?
That would be within the nuances of our standard terms and conditions, and I did not come prepared with that memorized today. But I'd be happy to work through it for you.
I think we, we just want to anticipate any of these, worst case scenario. I think we, we just want to anticipate any of these worst-case scenarios. I think I'll speak for councilmen.
Oh, no, please speak. Speak away, sure.
Because I'm assuming you're looking for action to approve this tonight, are you not?
That's what council would ask for, yes. It looks like here in termination, under standard terms and condition, the agreement may be terminated by either party with 30 days written notice. But that's failure to perform.
Yeah, that's for substantial.
Yeah, that's for non-performance. I don't know if that's what you're looking for.
Maybe under, B, under that five, could be.
Yeah, for owner's convenience, that certainly covers it.
And then, but, but in that case then, it says we pay to engineer, all services performed plus termination or suspension expenses. I'd like that clarified of what that is for this very reason. We have no idea the price on that.
So can you, can you get with them, Bob, and then maybe they can bring this to next month's meeting? Is there, is there another way to get it started?
I, I will not be available next month.
Okay.
I suppose the other thing is you could approve it subject to satisfactory language to legal counsel to be worked out on the contract in terms, if that's acceptable to, to Westler.
Yeah, that, absolutely that is, Bob. You're just asking about questions that are well above my pay grade to interpret. You know, I, I don't want to say that I feel Westler's not going to have a termination clause, but that's not something that I'm, I'm qualified to speak to.
So, well, without, sometimes we have a more assured funding source than we have on this, so that's why I'm being extra careful on it. The two minor questions then, where you talk about on the land acquisition, that quoted number, does that include or exclude what you would pay to your sub for that?
That is, that is the cost.
That is the cost. And I'm also assuming that does not include the acquisition cost itself, just your services associated with the acquisition. So this is not including what we're paying to the affected landowners?
That is not the cost of purchase the property.
So just for your, for your or your sub's services for it?
That's correct.
Okay. Then the points of clarification, an early estimation of this whole project, talked about a 750,000 gallon tank, did I miss it? Has that now moved to a billion dollar, million?
There was a draft of it, yeah.
Okay. And with that, there was also speaking of the need for an aerolator, I mean, I'll be talking about that, speaking, packaged plant will be at the end of its useful life, therefore we need a new treatment plant. Is that part of this now, or is that no longer?
I'm not certain what you're referring to. I could be referring to the phase.
It's going to be your full summary of what the project Phase Two was going to include. It talks back.
Is there a date on that document? Because I'm, I'm just trying to remember when, when that was prepared in the sequence of.
Is that the situation? Is that the situation where they were able to rebuild some of the things up there and get around that with the media that was in it?
I need to look at that document, Bob, just to understand what it is.
Immediate improvements are needed to, one, repair, rehabilitate the aerolator, packaged plant, and increase the capacity of the wells and plant.
That's being done now with Phase One B. That's currently under contract.
Okay. And then a new transmission base need to provide a second water source for a pit and a new 720,000 gallon elevated storage tank. And so that's been to a million, okay. That was my own question.
So you're okay to proceed, proceed as.
Under those conditions, it is still subject to my approval of language to clarify this, A, ability to terminate without damage if we don't get financing, and, well, B is kind of up to you guys as far as are you willing to commit? You heard him say, it could expand up to over a hundred thousand dollars, short of them knowing that we have financing. I mean, we all think you will get that, at least for that amount, but there's no shows. And that may just be the way it is, I mean, it may be a fact you have to live with. So some of this is gambling, but they want to get started on it.
Before we can get any assurances, they have to get started on this project. There's no timeline involved there.
And it's certainly one of those things that as we continue on this, we continue to look into funding and if it's not looking promising, we will be the first to let you know that, because it's a waste of everyone's time to keep on.
Fight that out later, yeah.
Well, arguably, yeah, it would be everyone's disadvantage, but arguably, you guys could see the handwriting on the wall, but still keep doing services in order to justify some payment, not that that would be a nice thing to do, and I don't.
That was your one.
I don't anticipate you doing that, but it's going to be on their dollar, and I just want to be careful about that.
I would move to approve the contract contingent on Bob's review and changes for the discussions tonight.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Look for the organ, with the honor.
So when do you anticipate starting a meeting with the county?
They asked for last Tuesday of the month, so last Tuesday of this month.
So who wants to be, to start? Does someone want?
It is, they asked for AM, between, I think it was nine and 12.
Right, and I usually work, so, or not usually, I always work, is that what I did?
What day is it?
Your at, where's 29?
Tuesday.
What day do we?
Tuesday.
Tuesday at?
Between nine and 12.
We haven't pinned a time down, Valerie asked for the AM. Wait, wait.
It's close to noon, but we can't represent.
He pulls all nighters.
I mean, I'll be glad to attend when I can, but, yeah, okay, so Jeff, so Jeff and Bob, that'd be good.
As close to noon as we can?
So you're going to replace him?
No, he'll do it, he'll have me sign.
That's going to happen. I'll sign until December 30th.
And do we have any idea where these meetings are going to be?
Not sure yet.
What, what'd you do?
Oh, my drink spilled on my towel.
Do you need pair of pants?
Nah. So Bob and Jeff will be close to noon.
You can use this room or Bob's office.
Somebody let me know where that is. If I get back from my appointment in Richmond, I'd like to go to that too.
If you could just shoot everybody an email in the house, I'll be got everybody in. Because I would attend if I can, but since I'm a hardworking guy, probably.
You're planning to do it this year?
Okay, don't forget your miss.
There you go.
Right there, missed her.
Oh, sorry, nothing. Because you drew an arrow on there and jumped, that was your fault.
Jumped.
Okay, so I'm going to back up a little bit, I apologize. Is that what you had, um?
Uh, that is, yes.
All right, thank you.
So does he need to sign this or anything, this contract, or you're going to wait until?
No.
I mean, the one page.
Yeah, that's why, because I will be suggesting maybe a page of addendum with some of the clarifications I want.
As long as Steve is cleared to sign it after clarifications and I'm buying it.
Cool.
Okay, I apologize. Somebody drew an arrow on my paper to jump you, but Zoe Davis, curb gone at 403 North Walnut, and the water runs directly into your house.
When I was a kid, there was a big ditch there, my grandparents owned it. The city widened the road. And if you look at the road, it's instead of crowned, it's slanted toward the north. I live on the northwest corner. I started this, I started this with Ed Zook, who retired in January of 2000. I moved on to Dean, I moved on to whoever was after, and I've had a couple of conversations with Mr. Rish, who I probably owe an apology to, because I was pretty mad last time I talked to him. But there is no drainage from the hill up on Parkway. It comes down to Mulberry, there's no drainage. It comes down, there's a curb up to the back, to my backyard on Shawnee, I'm sorry, yeah, Shawnee. The water comes from both sides, and it comes to my backyard and it goes into my backyard. I had to, it's an old, really old house, and it has a very low crawl space. And it flooded into the house one year, and I had to remove all my carpet, because it got nasty. So I bought a bunch of railroad ties, because I couldn't get the city to do anything at that time. I bought railroad ties and I put those all the way down through there. That's worked pretty well. However, these railroad ties are now not near as old as I am, but they are old and they're falling apart.
They're probably what, 25 to 30 years old?
Well, Dave Seaggers is actually where I got them from, so had he not pulled them off of his truck and put them down there, they'd probably still be in his truck, because I couldn't do it then. And I definitely cannot do it now. I've offered to pay for new railroad ties, not the most aesthetic quality, but to put down through there. But between the trash truck and the snow plows, and earlier this summer, I had some girl just plow into it and shoved it, shoved them and shattered about four or five of them, which they weren't in bad shape anyway. But, and if you go near my house, watch for mosquitoes, because it's always wet up there. But there's no curbing there. The city widened the road, took out the drainage. The tile is still there at the sidewalk, but it comes all the way down to here, and here's the tile. Nothing goes through that tile, because it, it just goes on down in my yard. It doesn't make it to the tile. So, and also that tile goes under the road, and above that, there's a hole about like this that has two pieces of asphalt in it, that when that asphalt, somebody officially runs into that and knocks it in there, there's going to be a drop there, which, there's little kids up there playing, their legs are going that easy. But my issue is I need some kind of, I usually start this with I need a curb, but it's been pointed out I might need a drainage tile, I might need. The other day, a fellow was up there working on my air conditioner who said, ask for a sidewalk and then they'll put a curb, because there is no sidewalk, and a lot of people walk through there. Well, Jerry, I know you walk through there. So that's, that's my, my question, is there some way we could put something there? It's like 147 feet, I believe is the length of the property, that there is no curb? And there is no longer a drainage ditch, and now my railroad ties are shot. So is there, I thought about concrete blocks, but if I put those, they're just going to knock them out of the way, so. Is there a way we can fix that, so I don't have to deal with my yard flooding or my house?
There is curb further up the street from?
There is curb from the back of my property west up to Mulberry. But when you get to Mulberry, there is no drainage top ditch or those little things with the metal that go in it. There's none of that stuff up there. So all the water comes down this hill and then down Shawnee. And when it gets to the block that my house is, the road is tilted like this. Now, a million years ago, people put tons and tons of dirt on the south side of Shawnee. And that, they don't have any curb on that side. I don't know if you guys know Joe Lightfield, but he lives there now. It used to be Mary Davis, Mary's the one that put the dirt there. But there's, you'll never see any standing water on that side. I have taken the mud and shoved it under the railroad ties and made a little dam. I, years and years ago, I used to pick up Mr. Lindley's lava rocks and take them back to him, because they would come all the way down the hill. When I was a kid, I didn't care so much that it flooded. Now that I own the house, I, I kind of care that floods. So I was wondering if there's any way we can do something to fix that?
Is there storms sewer in there?
Yeah, Ken, you got any thoughts on that?
I've looked at it, and my initial plans are to, temporarily to help the situation, is to replace the railroad ties to help that, until, until a more permanent solution. And it is a situation where, when that roadwork was done, something should have been done then, knowing that you got a road here, a yard there, water coming down that road. That's where it's going to run to. And so, and it may be such thing that just west of her house, there may need to be some kind of a drain put in there, and then to connect down to.
There's sidewalks there, there should be storm sewers. Above beyond your house, I'm saying up in that area.
All the way at the corner of Mulberry, I believe there is, but.
The only sidewalk is like if you go west of Mulberry and that. But from Mulberry to where she lives on Walnut, there is no sidewalk runs, runs there.
So do the railroad ties stop the water?
Yes. Except for the fact when they get hit by everything and they get destroyed or moved or.
We give them some more priority.
As I said, the, the, putting, putting some new railroad ties in there for, to help divert that now is a solution now, until we can, you know, look at, because, you know, this is one of those things, we've had the discussions on the storm sewer utility thing.
That's our contract right now.
Some of that, you know, money can be used for something like that, but it's.
Yeah, that's why I was going to ask, I mean, we have stormwater.
Yeah, right.
This also floods the two houses next north of me, which is Bobby Morrison and Sharon Benedict, which I know that they dealt with Sharon. But they have basements or partial basements, so they have sub pumps. I have a crawl space. Now, it is bigger in some places, but even when I was a little kid, my grandparents had shoved me down that hole, I could not get all the way through the kitchen. And the kitchen's at the back of the house. And that was a little bit tinier than, I like tiny, but I was a little bit smaller.
The other thing I was, I'm going to, I wanted to talk with Luke with choice one, that is our community crossings. And to see if we could, if that's something that can be worked into a community crossings grant, doing some drainage work.
You're still looking next year at that, because you.
Yeah, like I said, we're looking at, like I said, temporarily, replace some of the railroad ties that are solid. So there's some solid ones there to divert the water like it has for, like I said, 25, 30 years. Because those railroad ties were there when I started here. So, you know, and how long they were there, I don't know, but, you know, to help that situation now, that is my plan. Because listen, we've talked a couple of times about it. And that is to, you know, as a temporary fix to divert that water, is put in some new solid railroad ties there until, you know, plans or.
So when we divert that water, where does it go? I mean, is there a storm sewer that does catch?
There's, there's one down higher.
There's a cement pipe about.
It just doesn't get there right now, because of the way the road is there. Okay, so you're getting it over to where that pipe is, where?
So, yeah, and, 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 you know, like I said, look, when I went up there to look at it, long term, it may be west of her house, or like sort of in the middle of that block, needs to be some kind of a drain put that will catch that water before it even gets that far. That's coming from the west.
Well, I'd make a motion temporarily to pick those railroad ties back up and look at this next year when it's set across and comes up.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor? How soon can you do that, Ken?
We should be able to, in the next couple of weeks, get, get the guy, I can get the guys over to.
We just need to make sure temporary doesn't turn into 25 years.
I'll be in the nursing home 20.
That's my plan, is to, you know, get something.
You know, and make sure it comes up on the agenda in the spring, so we make sure we, we focus on that a little bit.
Well, we should be looking at a fix for, before spring.
Right, but I'm thinking when the money comes around next year.
Because to me, it's a stormwater issue, and don't, can't we use stormwater funds to fix that? I mean, we have those, so we should be looking now how to permanently fix it.
Well, that's, that's what I seen, is where, where is the storm sewer on that block? And you said that, you said there were no, there's no grates going into a storm sewer, so is there?
Not from, not from Mulberry Street, not her place, there's nothing. So water just comes down off of Mulberry, off of Shawnee from up there like where Ron Holbrook used to live, and, and that water comes down that hill and just comes right on across Mulberry and just continues down that street.
It seems like we've got a lot of problems in that area, like by Delaware, across from Daryl Street, so we might want to look at that.
Should we look at getting some estimates on, doing something like that so we?
I think Ken should look into some solutions, yeah.
Talking, getting some kind of.
Yeah, if we can do it sooner, then do it sooner, but that definitely needs to be a permanent fix.
Okay, you heard it here first. In the next couple of weeks, he's going to get on that, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, sorry I missed you.
No, you didn't, it got interrupted. You had a motion and a second.
Oh, yeah, it was a second.
Mine did.
On favor.
Aye.
I thought we did, Ken. Ken, I guess you should fill up updates on all the delighted forms that have been turned in. 502 East Main, 411 and 415 West.
We've had another complaint on 411 and 415.
The one, uh, 502 East Main, um, I've sent them another letter on getting that cleaned up. Um, I did notice the other day they were doing some more work out behind it. Um, the one, the burnt house next to the liquor store, that one. She had called me when I was out of the office and I've been trying to get back hold of her to see where she is on getting something else, getting that one tore down. And the other one?
411 and 415.
411 and 415, front street.
I've not sent any letter on that yet to those people.
And which is the 22 East Main?
Huh?
Which is the 22 East Main?
22 East Main.
22.
That's the one, that's the one that, they've already, they cleaned that up behind.
All right, and 115 Myers Avenue?
That one, there was some weeds sticking up out of their fence. I've been by, they've done some, getting rid of weeds, you know, they've.
Making progress?
Yeah.
Okay, and 501, 503 East Church?
501.
That'd be behind, behind.
The letters going out to them, I don't know, the one, I don't, Richard, did you ever look on those cards?
I did, I did talk to the guy and I don't know what his address is, it's not Church Street, it's the corner of Church and.
And Church and.
Yeah, he's supposed to have them removed. I was on vacation, so I don't know if he's moved it yet, but.
Well, last I noticed, they, they were still there.
They're still there, I went by today.
They will be addressed tomorrow.
Is that the white car?
Well, they're between, they're sitting between a garage and a privacy fence.
It sits actually off of Church Street behind this house. There's two cars, there's a car and SUV between a garage and privacy fence.
There was one of them on the public road, there's no plate and I tagged it and then I think they moved it down on that property.
So, on your letters, you give 30 days, is that what they are?
And these are all your preliminary letters, not an absolute finding of untapped?
Yes.
So, all of these have received letters?
All but two of them.
411 and 415 West Front.
Both Front Street didn't get a letter.
Front Street, okay, the two on Front Street belong to the same person. I've not sent a letter to them yet. And then the other two is on Church Street. Now, I've got, I'm starting to draft the letters to get that, theirs cleaned up.
So, they haven't had a letter yet either? They, they need a letter this week. We can't come in here again next month and talk about the same properties that people are complaining about. Honey, am I wrong? I mean, am I the only one that's feeling this?
No, because we keep, we hear it when they come in, you know, that's, we just have them fill out a form and bring it back up again.
Yeah, so we'll just put this back on the agenda for next month and revisit those.
So, so I'm simpler on the subject, can I bring this more up about this?
Absolutely.
We, we talk a lot at home about, about the properties and we, I, I sat down today and just started writing down the addresses of properties that either have trash, they're either abandoned or they've got weeds, they're overgrown, you can't even see the properties at some point. I came up with 26 properties and something's got to be done. I mean, we, we sit in here and talk about them just because people come and complain, but we shouldn't wait for complaints. This, this stuff, every one of these properties on this list should have some kind of letter to them, like right away. And I went and looked at the ordinance on weeds, really, they only get 10 days once, once we send them something on weeds and grass. And I got one for everyone. That's one down, Ken, too. So, you know, what gets me is I go down, I go down through these places and you see the same place down on Church Street that has weeds growing up for all summer long. And they should only get 10 days once that letter goes out or they get it in their hands or we go and do it. That's the way the ordinance reads, I believe. Is that right, Bob?
I think so. Yeah, and I guess I thought that overgrown letters were going out all summer long. And, I mean, and that's different than the unsafe building letters, Ken, are there, have you sent other weed letters out to people?
There are two, there are three of them that we've got on our list to get, to go mow.
The old Presbyterian church.
That's, that's always a.
Yeah, that's just.
And after that, we've got to make sure we send them a bill.
Yes.
Because that's the follow-up.
We can't, we have to put a lien.
Well, no, first, I can send them a bill and then if they do not pay the bill, then I have to put on.
Well, first you tell them to do it. If they don't do it, then you mow and send them the bill and if they don't do that, then you put it on their taxes.
What is, what do we charge for that?
Whatever you want.
Whatever I. On, on the letters that, on the letters I've sent out, on the weeds, I got, there will, there will be a minimum bill of $250.
Okay.
But, there's still no mowing it.
And, you know, some do, some don't. You know, and, and the, the other question I, I was gonna, wanted to bring up and ask Bob, like some of these first letters that I had sent out earlier, okay, they came and mowed. Well, you know, I go by, I'm getting, you know, they're starting to get to where, you know, they should have been mowed again, but they have.
So, basically.
Okay, now, here's what was the question, when I, can I, can I put something in there that, besides having to mow, can I set, assess a fine? Or is there some way I could put in a letter that, you know, if I have to, uh, if you become a repeat person and I send a letter again and have to deal with it, can I assess a fine to that?
Well, I, I'd have to look and see if, I mean, as long as they are complying with your demand to mow, I'm not sure you can fine them too because then they're not technically in violation. They'd only be in violation if they do not respond to your demand to mow. Um, so, I don't know whether for, and maybe that's something we can put and repeat that if they get this demand letter so many times that we can do a fine. I, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, but I'm fearful.
That was the question, you know, those two places over on Front Street that are owned by the same lady. You know, I sent her a letter, she came in and mowed it. Now, she probably, now they're getting growed up again. And so, that's what, you know, it gets aggravating when you have to keep.
Yeah, we shouldn't have to send somebody half a dozen letters every year to show that they mow it six times.
And that's what I like to, and I, on them people that, you know, our lap way that they mow, okay, but then they let it grow up again and I've got to send a letter again. I would like to be able to also, if I got to send them a second letter, assess a fine to it.
Put some teeth in it somehow, yeah.
You shouldn't have to, just drive around making sure I mow those.
It's kind of.
Well, that's the thing, and when you talk about, you know, we're supposed to charge them for their, our total cost. Well, part of our total cost is your time going down there and checking and make sure they did it. So, that needs to be added in there too. So, make sure you add every dime that it costs.
That's why I put initial fee, a, a minimum $250, you know, like the Presbyterian church. That's one on our list to go mow and get rid of. Well, it ain't going to take, but like, so you add my time that I've taken, those letters and all that stuff.
And it's going to take some time to clean that property.
Yeah, 200, I wouldn't clean it up for $250.
But, you know, there's one property there on Church Street that's near the old National Road Traveler, you know, that one corner by the building that got formed down, the house got formed down.
Yeah.
So, that one just looks terrible. It's got weeds this high in the street.
Yeah, that's what I mean, they come in, they mow it once, but then they just sort of, yeah, okay, we mowed it, so that's fine. But, like I said, that's where like, if I got to send them a second letter because they don't keep up with it being mowed, I'm going, I, I'd like to be able to also assess a fine to it.
If they mow it once and you go back down there and it's whatever the height is again, you know, give them 10 days and go mow it again. I mean, they'll get tired of paying it and, you know, again.
They're not going to pay that.
They won't pay that.
They're not going to pay that.
Not, not on some of these properties, they'll never pay it.
Well, then they have a lien, right?
Well, they have a lien, but that's still not going to get you anywhere when that house sells, it's not going to happen.
So, what's your answer, let it?
I don't have, no, no, I don't have an answer. I'm just telling you that, that I'm not sticking it for Ken, not doing a job. I'm just saying, it's repetitive, it's going to continue.
It's, it's been an ongoing problem for years.
Any town, final 25 houses, just like it, just like Kenwood's, any town. And they haven't got an answer to it.
That doesn't make it right. That doesn't mean our town.
That doesn't make it right, but I'm just telling you, it's not just here.
Well, I, I don't disagree, but like I said, that doesn't mean we have to put up with it here. So, you'll look in.
Ken, I would approve, I, I would agree with him. We've got to do something.
It seems to me in reviewing it that it's kind of a two-pronged thing. One is, I mean, it shall be unlawful and in violation of this subchapter for the property owner to permit their weeds to go to a height exceeding 12 inches. That puts them in violation. And the property owner who is in violation could be subjected to a penalty. Then, there's the second prong, that if you issue them a 10-day compliance notice, then you're demanding that they're doing that. That's starting the time running by which you can do it if they don't mow it. But, I'm not sure that that takes away your ability to also fine them because they are. Now, it, it says that any property owner who fails to remove the weeds shall be deemed in violation. Does that mean that by them letting it get to that 12 inches, that's when they're in violation? Or is it who fails to remove it after your notice? We maybe want to put in there regardless of whether they've been notified or not, puts them in violation so you submit a penalty to them. Because otherwise, they could say, well, I haven't removed, you haven't told me to remove them yet by that 10-day letter. So, we may want, I, I think we could at least attempt to fine them now in addition to demanding that they remove it and you do it if they don't. So, if you wanted to start.
Are some of these, are a lot of these properties like absentee owners? I know we have a problem with that right here. The people, they don't, they don't live here, they don't.
So, do they run the banks now?
They, well, they're some, some investment type company. There's one that, there's one that is owned by a company in Oregon. There's one in Texas, you know, they, yeah, they're places that are, they're not here, they're not local, they're not even rich and they're, you know.
Well, we got to find a way to get them.
Now, I would, I would say that.
Management book somewhere.
What you can file your lien for is just the actual cutting, removal and cost associated with that. Your fine would not be part of that. So, you could fine them, but then that ability to collect in that method would not include your fine. But, if you thought that the fine would help be a detriment, we could, we could clarify that they can be fined regardless of whether they get this notice, um, compliance notice or not. You could put in here that this fine would be applicable regardless of whether they've sent a compliance notice because they are in violation and of course, it'd have to be that 12 inches or more. And prove that, I mean, I know it sounds silly, but you'd want to measure it so that if, if push came to shove and they contested it, you have measured it, they were in excess of 12 inches, which means they were in violation and therefore subject to this fine.
So, do we need to clarify this?
If it sound, you want me to do that and you want that fine to be first offense? Or do you want it to be only if they have a subsequent offense of that?
Well, I think they're in violation as soon as it gets to 12.
As soon as I get 12 inches, technically right now, they are in violation. But, it then does say you'll give them a compliance notice after that and if they comply, then you can't mow it. But, the question is if they comply, does that waive their ability, your ability to fine them? That's what.
I say no, the second time is you have to keep babysitting people the second time.
I would say any subsequent.
Subsequent.
You, you do the babysitting letter and you say, okay, mow your 12-inch grass or 13-inch grass. Then if it comes back, then you could fine them.
Then let me look at this section, point 21, point 22 of your article 90 and clarify that so that there is no question that that fine can be taking place regardless of whether you've given them the compliance notice or not.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there, does that letter clarify whether they have to mow all of the property? Because we have one person in particular that I know who is a reputable Realtor who does not mow their backyard, ever.
And I, I've made a phone call to him and I've not heard back from him yet on that little square behind the garage.
Yeah.
But, it does not, it does not, it just says that, you know, just the vegetation, it just says vegetation, height of vegetation and, you know.
So, that is, that is far exceeding 12 inches though, right?
Yes, and that's, and that's the thing, you get some of these people, they go in, they mow the grass, but then there's places, oh, it hangs messable.
But, that's always in the way. So, that's why I'm asking, is there a way we can clarify that so that they know that if you don't mow the back too, I mean, you know, that you, you haven't really mowed it.
Right, and to what Jeff said, I know the particular person you're talking about and he's got properties in every town and it's the same.
Yes, I know that.
Yeah, so.
And it's unfortunate.
Well, he doesn't claim the front yard most of the time.
It's, it's very unfortunate. We, we got to get a stop.
Yeah, right, right.
It's like, as I said, it draws mosquitoes. I mean, there's all kinds of things that come up.
No, no, I don't, I don't, I don't want to do that fact at all. He's right, we got to take care of it. I just, we got to figure out a way to do it.
It affects everybody's property values.
Well, I would appreciate it if y'all don't fine me for the 12-inch weeds that are growing out of my railroad ties. The roots help stop the water.
I thought that was a plan for you.
That's what I do, I'm a planner.
Okay, so do we need a motion to have you do that, Bob?
No, the motion is, the motion will come when I present that to you.
Okay, all right. If you can work on that, we'll get this, now mowing season's almost over. No, I know.
I had a question a little bit related to that as far as your orders, you know, if we write a order as violation, can we assess a fine for whatever the reason is, dog running loose or whatever and they don't come in and pay? We're still back at ground zero, I mean.
You have to go to court and get a judgment.
Correct, but we've never done that since I've been here. We've never followed through with that, so it essentially has no bite to it because we don't do anything.
Well, the fight is the detriment is for them thinking that we're going to do something.
Right, but we still have people that don't pay, so I mean.
Yeah, and I agree, we still have to do it, but you're, I've.
We just have to have that.
I've seen enough of the banking world, see 25 liens and they're all just sitting there in order, waiting for the same.
Well, I'm not talking about the liens, I'm just talking about the fines.
Because fines only come, a lien. Eventually.
After you get a judgment.
Yeah, but you have to be, but you have to take those steps to get to that.
Right, absolutely.
We haven't done that in the past.
How timely assuming is that to go and get that judgment and do, I mean, you don't even have the time.
Yeah, they've got 23 days to respond to it and they usually won't, so they may file a motion for default judgment and then submit an affidavit, they've been on hold and so there's a process. And if we were doing hundreds, you could get it down, but you're right, I mean, so far, it's not gotten that far because of the time and cost involved.
That's, that's what I was concerned about.
Going after bad often.
At least the $250 fines, at least compared to what your attorney costs to pursue that versus a $25 or $50 fine.
Again, but the time and all the effort that goes into it, there's, there's why.
That, that's one of our issues that we've had in the past was writing order violations. I mean, really, some of them aren't what the paper was written on if you don't follow, if we don't follow completely through with it.
Yeah, I know you're giving out six dog violations to the same person.
Oh, absolutely. And there's some, I mean, there's some laying there from five, six years ago, I've probably got rid of them by now, that they just never paid. But, granted, that's not a $250 fine, but the repeat offenders, most of them, just like, just like the vegetation. Or the banning cars or whatever the case may be. And maybe it would only take going to court a couple of times where, you know, hey, word spreads, hey, they're, they're not going to mess around with this any longer.
And my guess is if you start fineing them for not mowing a yard for once or twice, they're not going to do it all summer long, you know what I mean?
But, they have no fear of not paying it, they're not going to worry about it.
Well, that's, but that's what I say, if you get one $250 fine and you get another one and then you get another one, now you're up to almost $1,000.
Well, you're, you're just, remember, the $250 is what he's charging. Well, you're, you're just, remember the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars is what he's charging for the cost of weed removal. That's different than the fines. Are you wanting the fine to also be that two-hundred-and-fifty dollars? So then if you fine them and you do that, it's gonna be five hundred dollars.
I, I think it should be at least two-hundred-and-fifty, maybe more.
I, I do.
So it is worth pursuing, going to court over.
Yeah, we're basically tying our own hands.
Well, it seems to me we don't have any choice but to go to court at least.
If, if, yeah, when we had to follow it all the way through or it's not gonna be effective.
There's no point in doing it if we're not gonna.
Exactly.
So we gotta make it cost-effective to do it.
Yeah.
The first, the ordinance first can go directly to our office and then for us, then we, then if they don't, then we can take it to Heggers Town, like for us.
Well, that's something we've talked about in the past, you know, writing ordinance, the city court of Heggers Town, that way. I, I don't know if they cover that kind of thing or not, but it might have a little more bite to it because it's going through the, the court system that way. But still, Bob, I think we have to represent us, so you still have that, that legal fee.
They require an attorney. Corporations or towns, you can't do it pro se.
Yeah.
And it's just so people know, I'm, I'm not sitting on a, but I can only do it if somebody asks me to violate, so I've.
Right.
Been asked to do it.
Why does it stay with two-hundred-and-fifty dollars? If they repeat, why doesn't it double when you start going into the next time? If you don't, if they don't pay the first fine, at least that, at least it builds up.
No, it could.
I mean, it's.
So that's what we did on the little.
I mean, then it starts to hurt, yeah, more.
I don't think we're gonna solve the dollar issue right now, but I mean, could you write it so that we can then look at it and, and leave that dollar issue blank? That we can come back and address that.
Or you're putting something in the subject chain, so this is a placeholder.
Yeah, just X, X, X in there for the dollars and we can come up with a, a rational rationale.
Okay, so I, I have a question. So the house on Church Street that is right by Rosie Ryble, I don't have the exact address. It's a block from the thirty-seventh East Church Street. I think you all know what I'm talking about. It's right on the alley. You can't walk by the sidewalk now, I don't think, because the weeds from the house and the sidewalk are covering. And it's been that way for several years and I guess that's one that I'm having trouble understanding. And, and I wonder if, I mean, I think you should really look at that when you think about, I know as long as we've been here, I've been complaining about that house and that's been five years now. So I don't know if you can look at that and say, that's, that's a standard. I mean, that's one that we definitely need to use as a prime example of all this, but I just wanna point that out that nothing, nothing is changing that situation. It covers the house.
He'll go, he'll go and mow the grass, but then he leaves the stuff around the house alone.
And it's, there's another guy that doesn't live here. He lives out of town and the last I ever talked to him, he lived in Connerville or Fayette County somewhere.
Last I knew, he did live up in apartments.
No, that's his dad. That's the dad, isn't it? Cause the dad's mowed the yard before.
His dad's son, I think that actually.
He, he lives in the apartments above, uh, on the corner of a foot and main, main. Cause if you look at his, his little sort of a brown color SUV of some type, that's where it sits.
Anyway, she drive that place, it's been a mess since I worked here, since I started, so.
It's been a mess since I started.
He's saying he's gonna fix it up. That's what he keeps saying, he's gonna fix it up.
The Amy's house, that got torn down. There was a house that was worse than the next one.
I think it was on the other side.
It was, it was on down.
I used to run that block and yeah, you can't get through there now. So now I cross the street and go on my run.
But that's, that, what made me think of that is a Presbyterian church. It's the same issue that vines are growing over it and do we have, we need to be able to enforce that.
So would it mean any requirements for unsafe structure?
That one should.
Which one, one.
One on Church Street, probably.
Probably, probably those, probably, you know, if I could, we get in there.
I will clarify, cause I do this at county level, just because a house is abandoned, doesn't mean it's unsafe. If it's sealed and, and I don't know if this house is sealed or not, but it's been abandoned.
It's, it's, as I say, it's been empty since.
But abandoned doesn't make it unsafe.
Yeah, but probably if I look, I don't know. Years ago, I thought there used to be maybe a hole in the roof. I'm not, you know, but like I said, the way those stuff is going.
Just mowing the grass isn't, I mean, it's a weed and grass thing. And so if he still has weeds and shrubs and stuff growing on the side.
Especially if they're going on the side.
He's not in compliance, so.
I guess send him a letter to me.
That's one on my list in the office.
Yeah, Almer, well, maybe. New business, a new complaint regarding three oh eight. Oh, I, I skipped the solar eclipse. Are you talking solar eclipse?
Yes.
Okay.
And I don't know if we wanna discuss it in here or we wanna, you, you all can say, but we've had some meetings about the solar eclipse with Jeff and Ken. Richard Benin and some other people. We've kinda talked about some things. We've got some portlets ordered and that kind of stuff. But one thing that's kind of a sticking point right now is the park. And what we're gonna do with the park, how we're gonna handle the park, cause that's gonna be a prime viewing place for the eclipse. And the thought is there's gonna be a lot of people wanna come in there and park and probably days before the eclipse even. And the question is, how do we wanna control that? And, or do we wanna control it? I think we have to, but, you know, we, there's even talk that, you know, it doesn't make sense to rent out spaces in there. To, so we can kinda control what's going on there. Minimally, I think you're gonna wanna mark some spots in there so people park in orderly area. But I said, I need to bring this to the whole council so we can talk about it and, and you know, maybe this is another meeting that we hit. But if it is, it needs to be gonna happen pretty quick because it's, we're kind of at an impasse because it's now, it's what do we do with the park is the main thing. And, you know, it's hard to control that because they can pull in anywhere.
Are you envisioning overnight, almost like it's bringing it to a temporary campground? Is that what?
Maybe.
Maybe.
But temporary fencing maybe around the outside of it?
Yeah.
That rent, like you can.
And that's been discussed too.
But if you did that, it's only you're recouping some money by, if you go inside and have fence, it's gonna cost you some money to put your car in there. But then who's gonna sit and do that?
Cause you know, people parking there for the fireworks, you're, you're gonna get that by ten times probably for the eclipse.
And like you said, they'll just be in there willy-nilly. They could come up there a week before and just park out in the middle. I mean.
Well, although right now technically the park closes at a certain time.
Yeah.
How would it be different than the fireworks? I mean, we kinda allow people to park their trucks. I'm sure that they'll probably do that.
The fireworks, you don't have overnight people, do you?
Oh.
Some people leave their cars.
What are your thoughts, Richard, as far as?
We had some discussion on this. I mean, there's a lot of factors in this too. What about the weather? If it's raining for a week straight before this happens, we don't want everybody pulling in there either. It's gonna tear all day, you know, we're gonna have people get stuck, but, you know.
Do we want people camping in the park?
My, my issue was, for as far as us, we're not gonna get a lot of help from outside agencies because they're facing the same problems. So they're all gonna be busy too. You know, what do you do?
I mean, we could go out and find an organization that will help, you know, with organizing it somehow. Or I don't know what the answer is, but I know, you know, we're not gonna make the decision. It's really, it's a town's park and we, we need to figure out what we're gonna do. So, and I don't know, maybe you need time to think about it. We should schedule some kind of meeting in a couple of weeks so we can talk through ideas or. But we really need to get something going right away because to make other plans, we're kind of at an impasse because we need to figure out what we're doing with the park.
Does the town control any other land that's not so much pristine as the park? Rent out spaces, put in toilets or anything else?
I don't think so.
You know, the only other place that could be another issue is the well field.
Does the fence go all the way around the well field though?
No, the well, the fence only goes around the treatment plant, but you got that whole field out there. That could become an issue.
That industrial park up there too, and all those roads around.
So, you know, we don't wanna discourage people from coming, you know, because it could be, you know, a boon to the businesses in town and such, so.
But you wanna do a reasonably accommodative, then you.
Yes.
Maybe make some money, but, and then keep the things being destroyed.
Yeah.
Keep liability down, so there really needs to be some thought put into this.
Cause that, and that, you know, like from what Richard said, the weather, you know, if we've had a bunch of rain. That well filter plate, it's gonna be wet and you got people just rolling in there, well, then you got them getting stuck. Then you've got rucks, you know, it could become a bad situation out there.
Well, maybe with some signage, you know. Well, I know.
And so that's where we're at, you know, if we, once we decide what to do with the park, we have to figure out what kind of signage we need and how we're gonna. If we need to fence part of it off so we control how they go in and, you know, all that kind of stuff.
And you control whether or not they do go in until we decide to let them run.
Does this council have a subcommittee that is studying that, that can back the recommendations of what is the best way to prepare for this event?
Are you recommending that, Bob?
Yeah.
We don't have, we don't have a specific one. We have a group's been meeting, a group, discussing the fire and the police that are meeting and everything like that.
I think, you know, if you're gonna consider doing camping there too, which I'm, I'm not opposed to that, but you're gonna have to have some type of security. The whole, the entire event because if you put a hundred campers in there or a hundred tents or whatever it is, somebody's gonna have to be there. Whether it be volunteers or us or whoever, but it's, it's gonna have to have some, some type of security.
Can we legally charge people to park in the park or set up in the park because it belongs to the community?
Well, I think you could set it up.
You would set it up then.
I mean, as long as you, it would have to be open to all public. You can't pick and choose the people.
Right. No, no, we have to charge. We take a donation from the department. We can't, that's why they won't pay. We can't say they get dropped through.
That changes the rule because before you can charge anything, that way he says a donation for.
No, I mean, it takes a change of order, but it could ultimately be done.
Or one event.
Yeah.
I mean, it's no different than like the, the fairgrounds, I mean, for the four-H fair and all that, they charge you to get in. You know, I know other towns too are talking with the schools. Some schools are already not gonna have schools, some are, are gonna dismiss early. And I know other towns have talked about working with the schools and having their parking lots to utilize. I know Centerville has, that's been a talk about them and even up north, I think Heggers Town, they're talking about that because they're one of the prime is possibly utilizing.
I think they've already, they've already canceled school for that day, correct?
Yeah.
Here locally.
Do you wanna, that's probably a good idea to have a subcommittee and figure out and, you know, come back with a recommendation next month. And I'm okay being on that with, with Ken, Jeff and Richard, but I'd like to see one more town council member be on as well.
When do you meet?
Hmm?
When are you gonna meet? When's the meet?
I'll figure, six or something. We've been meeting here on that.
This should, so email.
We, we put off, you know, schedule one until we could talk here today.
Okay.
Is there one other person or is, is everybody gonna?
If you just have one other person, it doesn't necessarily have to be notified to the public. If you have three, then it's gonna be a public.
Yeah, so Mike was first.
Mike, yeah.
I'll, I'll send you an email then, Mike.
Sure.
Yep. Good.
Thank you.
So new business, new complaint regarding three oh eight West Maple.
Right, I just put that on there. It's already had one complaint against it. She mowed a little bit and now it's back to the same situation it was before. So the, the other neighbor now has complained.
Okay.
Yeah, those are all, all the way.
So have you sent them a letter?
These are some tall weeds.
It's been early on.
Yeah, it is.
So this will be another second letter?
Yeah, it is. Number sixteen.
Yep. Okay, so, so you're gonna send them another letter, okay. Next is motion to approve twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-two cent donation from Crime Watch to the police department for body cameras.
I thought he was gonna be here at the last meeting. Remember, I had him on the agenda and they didn't. So, um, Richard already knew about the money, but we just, we never accepted it so they could purchase their cameras.
I zoomed to approve that, that donation for Crime Watch for body cameras.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd just like to say I appreciate them.
Oh, I say again, that's really.
Fifty-five thousand dollars that they've raised on two different things for us over the past several years, so that's pretty amazing.
That's amazing. We really appreciate it, especially in the short timeframe that they did it.
That's probably worth a letter. Should I write them a letter? Thank you.
We can. Next is motion to approve three hundred dollar donation from Jim and Norma Burks to the fire department.
Yes. I'll make a motion to accept the three hundred dollar donation to the fire department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. It was nice too.
Yeah, it was really nice. Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate that. Fire station wants to donate old slash new stove to.
Very good.
And the new one came in, no problems.
It's replaced and we got the other one set down. We're gonna wait for approval to send it over to the Legion.
I'll make a motion.
You guys remember the first stove that came in?
Yeah, we, yeah, yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Um, last month, we had a, Main Street had a concert at the park, went very well and I think you've already talked about that. There's another one this Saturday. I had talked to Richard, asked what he thought, but I, I feel like we should probably close Parkway Drive from the park to, to Green Street, so.
We need to stop at property line. We need to stop at our property line, not go away to the park.
Okay.
Cause we, cause there's people, there are residents there. We always make sure when we have cars here, we maintain their access.
Sure.
Since, since we're on that matter, I, like I've said from the start, these concerts are great. But once again, this is approved, there's board that we're gonna alcohol. I guess when you guys get the license, Main Street gets the license, is that correct?
Yeah.
That's correct. I mean, we approved it, one of you guys, you got ran to the board. Well, my understanding, there was quite a bit of drinking going on down the park. This has not, I mean, quite a bit, kids, adults. Not a good sign, not a good sign.
I was there. I didn't see.
I, I believe me, Brittany, it was there.
I was, I was in the fire station. I never got.
What did we see? What, what happened?
I'm not gonna name names and I'm not, I'm just telling you, it was, it was there.
So you were there?
No, I know, I have other people that was there, believe me. I, I mean, I'm not lying to you. I wouldn't bring it up, but I'm, I'm just telling you.
Did we have somebody down there?
We had an officer there that was complaining to her.
I'm not saying they acted up. I'm just saying there was drinking.
I was there too.
You know, if they're sitting in their car or at their car and all that, I mean, I can see where it'd be very easy to.
I'm not pointing fingers at you, Richard.
No, I know. I'm just saying I could see where it'd be easy to sneak it in. That's one of the issues that we addressed when we started talking about this, but.
I didn't see anything disorderly.
I'm not saying disorderly. I'm saying alcohol in the park.
Yeah, but I, I just mean, I didn't see anything disorderly that would, that was out of the way that.
I think there's maybe some confusion, you know, because we have talked about this and the general consensus in the public is, okay, it's legal to have alcohol in the park now. Even though we're, we're gonna make two com, two concerts when, when we do it.
Specific areas, actually.
Specific, yeah.
Yeah, and so, but I think it's mainly got, you know, misunderstanding that because it has been talked about that in a public meeting that now people think, well, it's okay if we take our own alcohol there and drink. Which is, which was one of the fears that I had to begin with, but, you know, I.
I'm not understanding, I'm still understanding part of what we need alcohol down. I'm not following that. That's probably part of it.
Not understanding the law is no, I mean, it's still.
Well, that's, absolutely. I'm just saying, I think that's, you know, maybe why there's an issue, but to my knowledge, the officer was there, had no problems or didn't see anybody drinking. Yeah, I, I'm not aware of any.
I've also heard several times about permanent stage going up again and I'm not sure what this rumor is coming from. Jeff, have you heard any more about it? No, what, what we looked at is basically a candidate. It's not gonna be an issue for the park room. Uh, we, I went to the meeting expecting to have a fight and what they presented to me was great.
I know, it was, it was here. It was the park.
It was here. And I really expected that it was gonna, but it has a, it was, it looked good. What they presented, it looked good and it's gonna help us with a lot of things we do in the fire station.
So you can work around what's going on. Excellent.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I knew that was a concern.
We're on, yeah, we're on board. Unless it changed drastically, we're on board.
Cool.
Well, I think you, you were here one meeting too when we discussed the stage and whether everybody here supported it at that time.
I missed one.
I think you missed that. I think you missed that.
I, I was never on board with permanent stage, but I may have missed that meeting, but I think we talked.
Well, the stage, well, it's, the stage, or look, it won't be a permanent big stage, it'll be a canopy, the stage will be under.
But I can tell you, that is going forward, that's part of the help, uh, project with the county.
What's that?
That's part of the.
The event venue.
So we are talking about permanent stage, and?
Yes.
I think eventually.
But in our master plan, that land is to be used possibly for, and we worried about our master plan for many a time, we worried about our master plan not being followed. In our master plan, that's a site down the line that could be used for addition for the city building and the fire station.
In the master plan, it's laid out as a, as an event space.
It does have a stage in the master plan, it has a splash pad.
It also has, it also has that land coming off the back, it's in the master plan, about that land.
I think you're mistaken.
Yeah, it's, it's been proved.
Well, I think from that, from the medium that was presented, though, it was also made with this cover, canopy can be removed or moved to where if something like that did happen, where that, it could be moved to another location in the park.
Right, and that was what was brought up at the meeting, with, with Jeff's show, but. Because it's not, it's really kind of abnormal as an addition to the buildings, the current building.
Brendan, next time I'll get your pictures, okay? Of people making a part.
Jeff, I'm not saying I don't believe you.
No, I think you kind of are, Brendan.
No, what I, what I'm having trouble with is that, I know at the fireworks, that kind of thing happens, and I don't think it's happening anymore here at this than it does at the fireworks or anything like that. So I guess that's what I get concerned about.
I don't know about fireworks, I don't get it.
I wouldn't call you a liar.
So did you have anything else?
Do what?
Did you have anything else?
I have one other thing, I, I took a complaint from somebody, uh, about a plot in the cemetery. Uh, somebody that was, had passed away in January, and, um.
Sure.
They had checked on it, and somehow we'd missed seeding, I think, and that was taken care of. But it's still not in good condition. And I went out and checked up, and she's right, uh, there's still, there's barely any grass growing on it, a lot of weeds. And I thought, okay, maybe this is a one-off thing. So I went, uh, checked another plot that I knew somebody that had passed away in January. It was kind of in the same condition. So I think what we need to do is look at what we are doing with new graves, and how are we seeding those, and how are we preparing them? Because, uh, it just doesn't look like it's getting the job done, what we're doing now.
Is it anything to do with the weather, like the drought, or?
It's been a hard thing from the day I started here. Getting grass to grow can be challenging. Now, some of those graves that do, it's, you know, there are some that have not been buried very long, and they try to level them off to make them look nice for Memorial Day. Well, then after that, you know, well, then they do sink some more, and they, you know. And we've, we've gone through before, and, you know, rework on them, and, you know, it's, 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 it's a hard thing to try to get that, to get that grass to grow back to what was there before.
I mean, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, maybe we need to look at, there's some, maybe there's a better way than what we're doing. Maybe there's some, some kind of something we can throw down to the house.
I was gonna say, would sod work, or is that too expensive, or?
Because it's almost like pasture grass, I mean, it's like, do you ever notice that?
It's a regular yard type grass that we use, I mean, it's a scotch.
Yeah.
Seed is what we get to use and seed on that.
But weeds just grow faster and easier than the grass grows.
And it also depends on what kind of rain you get after you seed.
Yeah. Wash it away?
You know, but I mean, it's, it's been, it's been an issue, you know.
Well, they, you know, they have a patch that has, uh, some kind of media in it that, you know, serves as like a straw or something.
Well, I mean, we, we put straw on top after you seed.
But it's not working, you know.
I mean, it's, it's just an, I mean, it's, it's just hard, something hard to, to get that grass to grow. I mean, it's, it's been that way for years.
So you give it so much time when, like, you bury them, and then you go back and check to see if it's sunk? Or do you not go back until four months, three months, what it, I mean, what's the? Cause sometimes you'll see them, they are sunk, and they've been sunk for a while. And then, then you go back and then sticks.
These, these two aren't even sunk, I mean, and they were, they died in January, I mean, it's been, it's been seven months. And there should be grass, and.
Like I said, it's, it's been, it's been a hard thing for years to try to get grass to grow. It's, it's, how the weather, how the weather cooperates with you.
So can you get him these graves, and let him take a look at them?
Yeah.
The gravel diet grows good in my driveway.
Okay, moving on, reports from any committees, boards, or commissions. We have a cemetery board meeting, and I don't believe there's anything.
Debbie said there was a park meeting coming up.
We have a cemetery meeting coming up, too.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, you're on that, aren't you?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I heard, too.
Yeah. That's the nineteenth, it's September nineteenth at six o'clock.
When did you say the park meeting was?
The park meeting, September twentieth, the day after, at six o'clock.
So we're gonna move on to staff reports, town marshal.
I don't really have any other reports already covered, um, I believe Seth, that's another.
Um, yeah, this summer, um, I applied for a grant with Drug Free Wayne County. I tried to attend the meetings, they had it once a month, partnerships between social services, a lot of, all the police departments, uh, meet together, but, um, I applied for it. They had well over eighteen thousand dollars for law enforcement, and, um, we were awarded this month and went for, accepted the check, the big check, but for four thousand dollars. So, um, I've been talking with Sherry, uh, for, through the email from the director. So just asking for approval to accept the four thousand dollars, uh, for, for the K nine fund specifically. It was for, um, the ongoing training, and then with the new vehicle we're getting to help with, uh, the kennel and like the heat sensor in it. But, um, that's what that was for. I just had to provide MRW nine, and then, like, the ACH so they can deposit into the town account.
And then that would go right into the dollar?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Pretty cool.
Thank you, we appreciate your good work on that.
You've done a really good job.
Yeah, you've spent a lot of money.
Lots of money.
Yes, he has.
Yeah, I got some other meetings this week about some other potentials. So hopefully next month I'll have some more news, some more money.
We appreciate you, Seth. Fire chief.
I'd like the, the town board to go back and revisit the ordinance for false alarms. Uh, we had, about a week ago, we had three in a row, three days, same place, same smoke detector. And the third one, I called them directly, identified myself and asked if they had a fire. I got transferred, put on a ho, put on hold. And it's.
After you've been toned down?
Uh, yeah.
After you've been.
Yeah, and I called them, cause I, you know, you gotta make, gotta go, but you know it's a false alarm, just try to get it disregarded. And they, I got put on hold, you know, they just totally ignore us.
Did you guys ever have that meeting?
Yeah.
We started it, but it never got, it just got, when we had talked about it, and the board, he fixed it for a while. But now it's, it's back good.
Yeah, do you recall that, Bob, when we talked?
Yeah, I mean, I thought we'd made a change, or.
We, we worked on it, but it never got put.
I said the same, Jeff, I thought we did, but I guess we did.
It was supposed to have been with the, you know, the line.
Yeah, we've got meetings coming up, uh, for the month. Um, that's, I think the police are also involved in that meeting, there's more than just fire issues.
I think we need to look at that from our perspective, too. Going to alarm balls, yes. Several businesses that we go to frequently, that sometimes three or four times a month, and it's false alarms. Um, I know some of the other police agencies in the county can write a violation, a citation for that, after so many, but we do waste a lot of time going to these false alarms.
Is there a malfunctioning alarm in the building, or?
No, nothing, smoke in the air, it's, but, at most, it was Route four oh three.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, and so, but you know, um, they, uh, regardless, they either fix your equipment or control the people.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's not a.
Right.
Fire problem, it's a business problem.
Yeah, exactly.
And, uh, you know, it's, uh.
It's easier to fix a broken alarm, I was thinking, than just fix it.
It's hurting the guys around Beddington, not when they know it's a false alarm. And, you know, someday it won't be, you know, so.
Right, and so, do they cover residential alarms too, like fines for the residential?
Yeah, but I mean, it's, it's a rare occurrence, or residential alarm, and you get just.
We don't get any of those, but.
Don't those go, I mean, like, if you guys get toned down, I know when ours went off all the time. You know, I would hurry and call, and then, or send you a message, and you know it's a false alarm.
Yeah, I mean, the protocol's for the loan company to call the key holder, and most of the time, especially the ones, the businesses that we get called to, we never have a key holder show up. Um, so we have to, you know, manually check the building, make sure it's secure, and whatever, you know, whatever, whatever the case is, but, and we, we never have a key holder show up.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's, we waste a lot of time doing that.
The same ones over and over again?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it like a lock, or something like that?
We have, we have two, we have two businesses that are repeat offenders.
A lot of it may be employees too, not, you know, maybe not operating the alarm correctly when they leave, or whatever the case is, but sometimes it's your, I don't know, if I don't have an explanation, it just goes off, but.
Right, that's what happened. Never did figure it out. That's all you have?
I've got, we got some equipment donated, but I don't have the key, I know the amount was six thousand dollars worth of rescue equipment. I don't have a ticket, the game's with the insurance company, um, they got the, they.
It's on our claim sheet.
Did you have the sheet?
I, I have it, on the claims, because they, the one that you had to pay for shipping.
Yeah, we paid for shipping, and they get, they donate food, I had this paid for ownership, and you can get six thousand dollars worth of rescue equipment.
Equipment management company.
Real good deal.
Equipment management company.
Okay. And, uh, so it's, uh, it's been, you know, it's really, it's good equipment, and we needed it. That balances our trucks out a lot better. So when we, regardless of what truck we go out, we have rescue equipment. You know, if we have multiple incident, accident, we got all the equipment we would need. And I said, six thousand dollars is great, it's a really good deal for us. I'd like to, wanted to accept that.
So did you find anything, Bob?
I'm not, I mean, I can't follow this in here.
Right, okay, so, let's just look into that, cause that's something we need to.
Right, yeah, we just need to stay on.
Yeah, cause I actually, the, the, get toned out, those people smoking in their rooms.
Whatever they're doing, or the, you know, just things, well, the, the tonic has a lot of problems with our system, seems like.
What happens is, cause I hear this myself, they tone them out, and before they ever determine it's a false alarm, the fire trucks are already rolling, and they're almost there, or they're there, and, oh, somebody's smoking in their room. And you just.
You know, we gotta go through, we gotta go through the whole building, check the whole building to make sure there's nothing else. And then we usually have to clear the alarm and get it reset for them.
Right, so, yeah.
He's, I think he wants you to make a motion to accept the six thousand dollar to the equipment.
I'll make a motion, we accept the six thousand dollar equipment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do we need one for mine, too? Sherry, for me?
Yeah.
Yep, we might as well do yours, too, so.
For his four thousand dollars for the.
I'll make a motion to accept the four thousand dollars for the K nine fund.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thanks, Seth, I had that on him, but I missed it, sorry.
Public works superintendent.
One of the things I would add is, I got an email this morning from Beth Newton. She's sort of the one with the West Wayne PTO that organizes the, they go, the Flying Eagle five K. Just to have the approval to close some of the streets, like they've done in the past for one, for a couple hours when they have that, uh, have that five K. It's, uh.
Canal Days weekend?
Huh?
Canal Days weekend?
I can't remember if it's Canal Days weekend, or it's, it's in September.
It's not, it's not.
I think it's a little bit later, because I noticed, I mean, can't remember if we would've had our meeting, you know, September, if, if it's before our meeting or not, I don't remember.
It was at Canal Days at one time. Yeah, I've run in during.
The firemen had it, it was always Canal Days, right? Yeah, Josh did it, yeah.
But like I said, they're just, like I said, they're the same streets they've closed, and, uh.
That's on the map, it's on the same map that.
Same map, and everything.
And is it the same route that you run?
No, no.
Okay.
Some of the, some of the streets are, but it's a little different than one of the.
Graham County Road.
And I, and I had, uh, sent her an email back, said, you know, telling her she needed to contact the county because some of those on Delaware where she's going to close, it's their jurisdiction, not the town's.
Do you know, Seth?
Yeah, it is September sixteenth.
Okay.
My kids and I run in all of that.
So you don't have a problem with it?
No, cause it's, it's been done in the past.
Yeah, you have a problem, yeah. I'll take them up and allow. I'll make a motion that we allow for the streets to be closed for the five K on September sixteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the only other thing I got, just a bit, I know the last one, you guys mentioned the two buildings in the park on painting. Um, I was contacted by Danny Berry, the minister at Cambridge City, um, in September. I don't know, he doesn't, didn't give me a date when it is. They have, uh, what they call, what, community. Basically, the church gets out and does some community service work in the town and that. He asked me if I had anything that we could, they could do. And so I'm gonna get them to paint, and they're gonna paint, one of the projects is gonna paint those two buildings.
That one might have to be scraped first.
No, like I said, I'll get wire brushes and whatever they need, you know, I need, and.
Close it.
Sounds good. Is that all you have?
That's all I have.
All right.
Good.
Let's move on to town attorney.
Yep, just a couple items. First, refer to an email I sent to all of them this afternoon. The State Board of Accounts did a routine audit of our use of the American Rescue Plan money, and came back with a incomplete regarding the one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars that was spent on the water project. And if you can get through all of their buzzwords, it basically was not objecting to how we used it, but that we did not have proper reporting and inconsistency on following through, that we made sure it was used as we thought it was. I don't think there's any question that one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars was used for the water infrastructure project. And in fact, as we all know, we opted for the, um, lost revenue option for that, that says, and you can use it for any governmental services. So between that, and then the fourth, which was that fourth option, which was water infrastructure, we really were covered in two different bases. So there's just no question that we used it properly. That, the only question was how we reported it to them. For example, when the check was sent, apparently on the wire transfer, there was some reference that it was for payment on a loan, rather than, and Sherry probably has better info than I do, rather than, cause it was sent to, I guess, Bank of New York, that was a construction fund manager, and whether the wire transfer, because of historically different wire transfers, said other things, it didn't say something properly, it just made her happy. And so it wasn't, it wasn't noted correctly on that. And so, um, there, we have to respond to this, and like, their bottom line was saying that maybe we should establish have to respond to this, and like, their bottom line was saying that maybe we should establish better internal controls and develop policies to ensure that the documentation is consistent and adequately identifies the use of the funds, um, it's a lot of bureaucratic mumbo jumbo, in my opinion, and they're looking for something to cross the Ts and dot the Is and justify their existence, in my opinion, um, but because we're talking about a hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars significantly, and we never want to have to be paying that back, and say it was an illegal use of the ARP monies, I contacted expert legal counsel in Indianapolis that does this all the time, he was the speaker at the seminar I went to, where I learned how we could do the ARP money, and he looked at everything and said, no, you gave all correct answers, it was all used correctly, but that there is just some documentation that might need to be amended to satisfy them, um, they are, this is with lawyers with Barnes Thornburg, very established historical law firm in Indianapolis, they know the lead attorney for the state board of accounts, and they offered to say that they would contact them, do our response if we desire to do it that way, um, that it would not be a cost exceeding five thousand dollars, we have that budgeted for outside professional services, they even said that this is a justifiable use of the ARP money itself, if we wanted to do that.
Take that chance.
Um, I probably could do the response, because we did it correctly, and it's just making the changes, but I'd rather be safe than sorry, so I think I would recommend that you guys retain their services to just make sure there was zero possibility of losing our right to use a hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars, so that's my recommendation, um, since all this came up just Friday, and then I set up a conference call immediately today with the attorneys, and sent them stuff over the weekend, that, uh, they don't have an engagement letter to us until tomorrow, but I said we have a meeting tonight, and that we could just verbally approve their retention of services, if that was your approval to do that tonight with Barnes Thornburg for that purpose.
Anybody want to make a motion for that?
Or have questions, I mean, I, they said, don't lose sleep, there is a zero chance that we're gonna lose that, but we do have to respond appropriately, and so therefore, if the proper response is made, there's zero chance, but I want to see that zero chance or do anything else, and I, for me to respond is also going to have a cost to it, no, it would not be the five thousand dollars, um, and, and they would try to keep it under that, but I just think with, by them doing it all the time, with their close relationship with the state board of accounts attorney, um, it just makes sense to, to utilize them for that.
I agree, and I agree with your analogy, and why it's like this, so I entertain a motion.
And you wouldn't even have to approve where that money's coming from, knowing that you've got at least a couple different sources, right now, we're just going to retain their services, so that they can write the response to the state board of accounts, and that would be an appropriate motion.
Not to exceed five thousand.
To hire Barnes Thornburg for that purpose.
Not to exceed five thousand?
And who is, would do that?
Barnes Thornburg Law Firm, and inside, John Mealy is from Richmond, from Wayne County, and would be one of his partners, um, by the name of Jacob Germain, I think it's Germain, G E R M A N is how it's spelled, um, but he is the one, he was the lead speaker for ARP, that's all he does, is ARP, um, documentation and compliance issues.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, um, retain the council from Indianapolis, whatever their names are, um, to write our response to the audit. Is that good, Seth?
Not too bad.
Yeah, that's fine, and I think Sherry agreed with it, Corby, who is our financial guy, also agreed that this was the best method just to cover us, that we all think were good, and probably could, could skate by, but none of us want to take that chance, so, Sherry, would you, you agree?
Oh, definitely, yeah, she's about my new career, I was just calling so much.
I didn't get that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. My second one is better news, um, and, well, I have more details, but Sherry and I met with the budget rep for your two thousand twenty-four budget, and we still are waiting to hear about, that is supposed to come in mid-August, which would be the fifteenth this month, is how much we will get on local income tax from the state, and how much riverboat money we will get, but assuming we get what we got last year, we're going to be in really good shape on our budget, you're going to have no concern, and we're going to be able to keep any raise to a minimum of anything on what taxes you're charging your local residents, and so I think when we have the public hearing on this next month, after we get these final figures, you're all going to be very happy.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Is that all you have?
And the third thing is just nothing more to report, although making, as my last email last, I think, week to you, on the stormwater issue with Wayne County, we are making progress, it's not finalized, but it appears that we're gonna have an agreement if they get one more approval internally.
That's, that's good news, too.
So, that is it for my.
All right, thank you, Bob, Michael, you have anything?
No.
Debbie?
No.
Sherry?
No.
I don't, thank you.
Jim?
I don't think we got in the approval to close Parkway Drive.
Oh, we didn't, no, you're right, we talked about it in the gym, started talking about the.
Yeah, I think Parkway open.
Yeah, so I would.
You're right.
Just behind the fire station.
I would move to.
From Parkway, from Green.
From Green Street to the fire department.
Yeah, our east, east border line.
Oh, I see what you mean, yeah, about the property, okay.
That's about where the guardrail ends, isn't it?
Pretty close, I think, I got, got a fence up like now, about the.
First.
What's that?
I got a little fence up pretty much close to where it's.
Yeah. So you want to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I'm making that motion to do that.
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jeff, do you have anything?
Nope.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right on.
Thanks everybody for coming, and thanks everybody that made donations.
Bye, guys.